Plane. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the City of Lake Forest Park City Council's special meeting for Monday, August 12th to order. And at this time, I've asked Councilmember Lebo to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember.
I pledge allegiance to the bar of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. With that, I entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
I move the adoption of the agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or discussion? Here none. All those signify by saying, in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Are there any ayes? The ayes have a thank you, council. Okay, tonight we have a wonderful group of folks here that have joined us. And this is, as I indicated earlier before the meeting, this is the fun things we get to do to and celebrate some really fantastic organizations. So tonight we're talking about the 2025-2026 biennium budget community partner presentations. And we're going to start out with Third Place Comments. I'm Celia.
All right. I have my clicker. I think this will, it's all set. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. And thank you also so much for your longstanding support and partnership at Third Place Commons. My name is Celia Sodol. I am the incoming director for Third Place Commons, and I'm new to this position as of July 1st, but I have served on the board for many years. I'm a longtime resident, have lived here for almost 20 years. So it's a real pleasure and such a privilege to be at the helm of an organization that I so strongly believe in. Before I get into a review of the last biennium, it is worth reviewing that the mission of Third Place Commons is to enrich and foster real community in real space. And we do this by facilitating hundreds of free public events in the commons. We sponsor the local farmer's market, and we build partnerships with many different civic arts and community organizations to better support our residents and the broader community. See here. Well. Do I need to hold it in a certain place, or?
Hang on just a moment, Celia.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, there we go. So why is this work important? We firmly believe that when people are provided opportunities to connect and engage in their community, they become invested and participate in ways that further build and support the community. So building real community in real space is truly what we do, and we are committed to building a strong, healthy, and connected community in Lake Forest Park and throughout the region. As an overview, in 2023, over 20,000 people participated in 68 standalone and reoccurring events hosted by Third Place Commons. This included live music, teen performances, senior dance events, theater performances, and so much more. And this year, we are on track to surpass our 2023 numbers. Through June, we have served about 1,000 additional folks through our various performances and events, including the Pacific Northwest Needle Arts Guild Stitch In, our Pop Can Robot Contest, the Cub Scout Pinewood Derby, and the LFP Town Hall on Building Climate Resiliency. We haven't yet fully reached our pre-pandemic numbers with our individual and reoccurring programming, but we are already further ahead this year than we were at this point last year. And we fully expect to continue this trajectory of increased engagement and connection in the coming year and beyond. There are also several reoccurring meetups and groups that use either the Statler Room, the Commons, or our hybrid. And these include things like our computer Q and A, which has been a useful and popular series led by Brian Boston for over 10 years, actually. Our popular book and movie clubs, our monthly art in held in the Commons, a weekly writers' group, and most recently, as of last week, a fly fishing Thai class that will be held on the third Sunday of every month. Our language conversation groups are going strong, and this year we're thrilled to add a play games in Spanish group for all ages and skill levels. And all of this doesn't even include the dozens and dozens of informal groups that meet in the Commons to play mahjong bridge, paint and draw together, play D and D, all kinds of things. And at Third Place Commons, we love to build community spirit around the holidays. We partner with KCLS and our mall merchants to provide a Halloween show and mall-wide trick-or-treating for kids of all ages. And we host two holiday craft fairs in November and December. And this past December, we also hosted a holiday theater production in the Commons that was very well attended. As I mentioned earlier, community partnerships are critical, and we're proud to partner with various local and regional groups to host candidate forums, educational events, theater productions, and a fun one from last year, CozyCon in partnership with Third Place Books. A couple of our signature annual partnership events include Secret Gardens of Lake Forest Park, which is a unique partnership with the LFP Garden Club, the Stewardship Foundation, and our friends at Shore Lake Arts. And we're always thrilled to partner with the city on events such as the Earth Smart Green Fair and also Family Day, which is coming up later this month. We have a long list of local partners, including nonprofits, small businesses, and other community groups. And in the coming year, we expect to expand our partnerships through additional outreach and collaboration. I often see several of you, and dogs, sometimes too, at our popular farmer's market. And this treasured community tradition is nearing its 20th anniversary in 2025. We welcome between 2,000 and 4,000 visitors each Sunday, May through October. And we have a strong and loyal vendor base with new vendors asking to participate regularly. To better serve our community, we gladly accept SNAP benefits, WIC, and Senior FMNP cards at our market. So, and we're also proud to participate in the statewide SNAP Market Match Program, which provides SNAP recipients with a dollar-for-dollar match up to $25 each week. So that means that a family in need can get up to $25 worth of produce free every week. And we also provide our own unique and popular local food assistance program with Market Bucks, and that's with generous funding from LFP Rotary. And with this program, we partner with Hope Link, Center for Human Services, the Senior Center, Dale Turner Y, to make sure that Market Bucks reach those community members in greatest need. So empowering kids, seniors, and families who struggle with food insecurity to purchase fresh and healthy food at the Lake Forest Park Farmer's Market. Hmm. Oh, now I went too far, I think. Oh. Is there a back button? There we go. There we go. During the pandemic, Third Place Commons was, in my biased opinion, but I think it's true, exceptional in pivoting and providing online programming for our community. We are now fully back in the Commons and ready to launch into a new chapter of renewed energy and focus. And there is work to be done in strengthening our community partnerships, expanding our community programming, increasing our community engagement, and connecting with our youth, seniors, and families to ensure a vibrant community at the Commons. But there are challenges. Already, I have increased our organizational capacity to connect with our community, promote our events and programming, and increase our donor base. But with inflation and increased operational costs and city funding that has remained the same since 2018, our lean organization is struggling to maintain long-term sustainability. During the pandemic, we took drastic measures to limit costs, and as part of that, reduced the amount we paid for programming. In the next biennium, we would like to restore and increase the amount we pay our weekend music bands and musicians and other program professionals. These, these are folks who acknowledge that they could get paid twice as much elsewhere, but are playing for us out of devotion and charity because they love the Commons, they love our dance floor, and they appreciate the strong support that they receive. We would also like to address our increased operational costs, such as communications and printing and technology. And I would like to provide more than a minimum wage for our professional events manager who, among other things, provides exceptional sound and tech assistance for our programming several days each week. As I mentioned, we have not humbly requested an increase in city support since 2018. And at this time, we would welcome your consideration for an increase from 28,500 to 35,000. This represents what would be a 3.5% per year increase over the last six years, which barely covers inflation over that period of time, along with increased operational materials and staffing costs. So we hope that you will generously invest in Third Place Commons, which is proud to be the only community partner located in Lake Forest Park, based here, serving primarily Lake Forest Park residents, along with the broader community locally and regionally. We have so much to look forward to in the coming year, and our renewed focus at Third Place Commons is well timed with some really big anniversaries that are right around the corner. Third Place Commons turns 25 in 2025, and the market turns 20. So that is certainly cause for some great celebration. And we're already planning some exciting events for the coming year, starting with our annual breakfast, which is going to be on Thursday, March 6th at 7:00 a.m. So you can mark your calendars now. But more immediately, we have Family Day coming up on August 25th, and that is in partnership with the city at the Lake Forest Park Farmer's Market, and I hope to see all of you there. Thank you again so very much for this opportunity to present to you, and thank you also for your continued support and partnership. We greatly appreciate it. Before I end, I do want to recognize our active and phenomenal Board of Directors who bring so much passion and dedication to this work. They're listed here and also include, as you can see, Councilmember Bodie. So thank you so much for your participation. And I'd like to just recognize two of our board members in the audience as well, Sherry and Jen. One of the things that the board has done over the past year is to repaint the Statler Room. It looks fantastic. So if you haven't had a chance to come by and check it out, I encourage you to do so. And then pop by the office next door to that and say hello to me as well. So thank you again, and I hope to see you at the Commons.
Thank you so much, Celia. We're all very excited that you're on board with the organization. Colleagues, questions for Celia? Please, Councilmember Furchar.
Hey, thank you, and I appreciate your presentation. As a sometimes member of the ukulele, a sing-along thing that happens, seems spontaneously. I really appreciate that space, and I think a lot of our members here appreciate that ability to be able to gather in that, in that space. I'm just wondering, is there any kind of threats on the horizon about losing that space or basically being, being forced to relocate or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of. I did have a very positive and productive meeting with Merlon Guyer just last week. And that's certainly a relationship that I want to continue to build. And, and from what I understand at this point, that that is not an issue.
Thank you. Thank you. Colleagues, Mr. Lebo.
Thank you for the presentation this evening. I really appreciate all that you do in Third Place Comments and the market. I also appreciate that your farmer's market is dog-friendly.
We appreciate having Penny there.
To our friends online, Semra, Larry, councilmembers, do you have any comments or questions for Celia? Mr. Goldman.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thanks for your presentation. And I do very much appreciate that you are a local LFP. And this is not to disparage our neighbors to the West, but it is nice to have very much, you know, hyper-local representation there. I have a question about the farmer's market. I know you spoke a little about this. I was hoping you could maybe elaborate a bit on SNAP versus the food bucks and Market Match and what the different programs are to help individuals in need.
Sure. So when someone comes to the farmer's market and wants to take advantage of that assistance, they come to our table and from the Third Place Commons hosts, and we run their EBT card. And that's the card that they can use in the grocery store as well. We run that, and we give them tokens to use at the market. That is the federal program, but then there's the state program with SNAP and SNAP Market Match. So they are then able to get the up to $25 worth of SNAP Market Match, so they can use that at the market. And the Market Bucks that the program that we provide, those are separate $2, they're, you know, pieces of paper that look like this, large $2 bills essentially. And, and we give a certain number of those to our, this year it's three partners. And then they distribute those to those folks in their community who they feel would benefit from that. And then they come to the market and use those. And then Third Place Commons, each week, we process those tokens and the SNAP Market Match and the Market Bucks, we reimburse the vendors for that amount, so that they are getting what they should receive. And then we work with the state and build the state for, for the SNAP Market Match. I hope that helps.
Yeah, it did. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Riddle, then Deputy Mayor Bodie afterwards.
Thank you. Little known fact, the farmer's market is also somewhat cat-friendly, as I've taken my cat in my carrier there a couple of times. We always get quite good response. Thank you for the presentation. I was having some audio issues that I've resolved. Can you remind me what our current, what your, what the ask was last year versus what you're asking this year? I apologize. I didn't hear that.
28,500, and we're asking humbly for 35. Thank you very much for that.
Deputy Mayor Bodie.
Yes, thank you. Just acknowledging that I am a recent board member for Friends of Third Place Commons. I, I do want to say it's so interesting because it's such an important part of the character of Lake Forest Park. So sometimes people think we run the Commons, the city, where we run the farmer's market and, or Merlon Guyer does, or Third Place Books runs it. There's, there's certainly not a full recognition of the incredible work that's done on a shoestring by the organization. And it is so compelling. It is actually one of the reasons why people move here, is that sense of community and having that community space to get together. And so just making some general observations that I've noticed. We recently got an email regarding fixing the bike racks that were sent to us as if we're, you know, in charge of the internal and external facilities over, over by the entrance to the Commons. So anyway, I do, I do think that the success in building community is, is notable because people do know about it. And again, I've talked to a number of recent arrivals who have moved here in part because of the activities at the Commons.
I, I appreciate that. And I don't know if, if you all received. If you didn't, I will gladly put you on the mailing list for our newsletter. I sent out my first one a week and a half or so ago. And in my introduction in that newsletter, I noted that the, what sealed the deal for me and my husband in moving here was visiting the town center and standing in the Commons. We had looked at a house, seemed pretty good. And then we came down to the, to the Commons, and we knew that we didn't want to move to a nameless suburb somewhere. And we walked in, and we thought, this is different. This feels different. It is welcoming. This feels good. There's activity here. This is a place where we could picture ourselves, you know, coming during the week and meeting friends or on the weekend. And, and it's been an important part of our lives and our children's lives the last 20 years. So I appreciate that. Yeah.
Thank you. Colleagues, yes, please. Councilmember G.
Hi there. Do you ever publish a list of the vendors that you have? And my second question is, I know that, that the vendors are usually based around food, but is there any thought to bringing in people that make other things?
Yeah, we have a list of all the vendors on our website. I'd be happy, be happy to share that with you. And we do have a number of crafters each Sunday as well. But that's also where we highlight our, our crafters once during the summer at our craft fair that happened July 17th, I think it was. And then we have a craft fair in November and December, in addition to the farmer's market. So three big opportunities for craft fairs, but then we do also have crafters at our, at our regular weekly market.
Colleagues, any other questions or thoughts for Celia? Thank you so much for what you all do for the community. And echoing what Deputy Mayor Bodie said, I was talking to a member of greater Seattle community a while ago, and they were like, Lake Forest Park, Lake Forest Park, oh, the Commons.
Yay.
So, and other, other positive note, I did not know that PAC 850 did their Pinewood Derby. I was a member of that PAC.
Oh.
10 years ago. Yeah, about 10 years ago. Yeah, maybe. So I'll have to, we'll have, I'll have to check that one.
Our son did the Pinewood Derby about 15 years ago there.
Oh. It was a lot longer ago for me, but thank you so much for what all you do.
And, and just one last thing, the ukulele group is meeting right now. So maybe after this meeting, there's.
Oh. Has absconded with my ukulele. We'll have to see if we can get up there. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, we're moving on to Shore Lake Arts. Welcome, Laura.
Hi, how are you? I am Laura James, the new, new executive director of Shore Lake Arts. Right, there we go. All right. So this is, you know, a wonderful honor to be able to stand here and speak to all of you. Many are the faces behind the emails that I see. And so thank you for having me here tonight. I know that there have been a few changes in Shore Lake Arts, so I wanted to kick it off with a little who am I? Because I am a shoreline resident in the Ridge Crest neighborhood. I bought my house in 2006, so I've been there for a while, and my kids have grown up. And apparently, we're on a bingo card of our kids wanting to be in almost every school they possibly can be. So I have one graduate of Shore Crest and then two go, two over in Shorewood this year. And then, of course, our, our dog Prince. So we are here to stay and very happy to be part of Shore Lake Arts. Again, for anybody who is not aware of who Shore Lake Arts is, we are, we are celebrating our 35th anniversary this year. So we came about, some people like to say the year that Taylor Swift was born, so 1989. And we started as a group that wanted to ensure that arts was infused with our education programs in the public school system. Over the years, that has grown to providing arts in a more broad sense, bringing it into the community and building community through the arts. And that continues to be our mission today. I, we are an organization that does events across shoreline and Lake Forest Park, hence the Shore Lake term. And, but I wanted to highlight the things that we are doing within Lake Forest Park. Our overall calendar is 19 events so far. As you know, things pop up, and we try to address those as we can. But Saturday, we held our arts in the park here at Animal Acres, which drew almost 350 attendees. And that seems to be a typical attendance for our events when we pull people together into the parks. We had a double Dutch Divas there, so people could actually, it was amazing. We had some folks like me that remember doing this in elementary school up there on the stage and doing double Dutch and just feeling like kids again. And it was just amazing. And then based on conversations that I've already had with the Parks and Rec team here, we invited a Shakespeare troupe in called Last Leaf that is geared towards children, so the youth, and making it digestible for them. So they came in and overacted and with their fun costumes. And so it was really fun to see children of all ages, from the youngest to the oldest out there enjoying that. But we also kicked it off in Animal Acres. So we like to start and end our summer concert series here in Lake Forest Park. Upcoming, we do plan on being part of your picnic in the park on September 7th, and then the Dia. Not only do we have our events arm over the organization, we also have classes. And so that is pretty much our core, how we began. And so we are just in our last week of summer classes, where we've offered 13 different classes, and from all ages, from elementary into middle school, high schoolers usually are off doing other things. But we would like to be able to address the high schoolers through other programming later in the year. But for summer classes, that seems to attract the younger crowds. We do pride ourselves in having 100% teaching artists who are building the curriculums and providing that for our students. And we also get a lot of help from our high school students, local high school students. All right. So 2024, I know you've, you know, I'm the last of the group that you're listening to. So I'm sure I sound like a broken record. It's been tough out there financially. And that has also impacted other changes within the organization, but change is not always bad. So it has allowed us to take a step back and really reassess what it is that we're here to do for the organization and for our community, and what does art bring? Because there are a lot of opportunities for our artists to get involved in this community. So what is it about Shore Lake Arts that makes it special? So that is the exercise that we're in right now. You've probably been following along. I am the returning, because I was managing director earlier this year when our first ED resigned at the beginning of the year. And then we had another ED in between me. But I am here and here to stay. And those leadership changes have, you know, offered other opportunities. And our staff has also aged with the organization. And what we've seen is we've seen a reduction in staff based on these challenges over time. And I welcome that because everybody should feel joy when they are coming and representing the arts, and they are still volunteers and members. And we hope to, that just builds our network even greater. But we have noticed a pattern in donations and volunteer time since COVID. I think it's just going to be a slow and steady ramp back up, but we're not deterred by that. It just allows us to do our work in different ways. And so that is the challenge that we're facing right now, and with a greatly reduced budget. One of the other things is that I hear as I'm in this position, what is it that Shore Lake Arts does? There are folks that have been around and know the organization and recognize it from the festival that we used to hold. Battle of the Bands was also a big favorite that we've been able to do. These are very labor-intensive, very costly, and those unfortunately have been put on pause. But I am determined to be able to bring these back. So with that, I know that this is the elephant in the room, if we didn't already have one, which is. So with that, I know that this is the elephant in the room, if we didn't already have one, which is the closing of our Shore Lake Arts Gallery, which is a very, very sad milestone. Yes, yes, many tears were shed over this. It was kind of a domino effect when our lead resigned from her position to move on into other areas. And from that, the other two that we had on staff also chose to leave. So we are, I think, in that space, we had had that gallery for fifteen years. And considering it was just a very, very, very hard decision to make that we had to close it, but we will, we do plan on reopening a gallery in another location so that we can continue to support our local artists and have that conversation and bring the community in. Trends that we're seeing, participation, we recently had a market study done, and it does say that participation, while our numbers are showing that our participation is up, and the interest in having more opportunities for art classes, presentations are also up. Along with that, up is not always good, so is the cost of doing business. And so that is what we are working with right now. The events that we have been able to put on, we're calling in favors. We're trying to honor what we have said we would do this year to the best of our ability. I will be very honest that I think that there is an opportunity here for us to also make sure that whatever we do is hitting a high bar for quality, that safety does not also take a backseat in these moments of trying to financially come back to a leaner state as we make it through to ensure another thirty five years. So with that, we are looking at twenty twenty five and beyond and having to balance our dreams with what our resources actually will allow us to do this year. An increase in what we receive, of course, is going to be great. I could give you any number. We are an arts organization, so of course we work with what we are able to receive as well. Eighteen thousand is what we have received in this last contract. And so with that of ten percent plus increase that we are seeing in the minimum wage increase with our vendors, our artists, they are all becoming out of our price range. So we are definitely going to have to make some additional hard decisions for twenty twenty five. But again, it allows us to reimagine and do something different. We're artists, so that's not scary. We can create. But we do want to make sure that Shore Lake Arts is strong enough to live another thirty five plus years. So with that, we have just signed a lease on a location in the Ridgecrest neighborhood of Shoreline. This meets, we are finding ourselves with the closure of the gallery. And then our current offices are over in the Shoreline School District Building. We are not in daily traffic anymore, and we are not in the conversation that happens, you know, just with our neighbors on a day to day basis. I think that's a huge miss, and so we worked very hard to get this property. We have a five year lease on it right now, and it is across from Ridgecrest Public House and Drumlin and that strip of stores right by the Crest Movie Theater. So it's a high traffic area. We intend for this building to be multi-use, where it'll contain office space as well as classroom space, which we do not have our own building right now, and we are very dependent on where we can rent locations. That comes with its own joy. And then also the front will be a gallery. We intend to have more pop up art events so that we can really showcase specific art and artists. Now, again, losing the gallery is huge. And when I look at our calendars, we are losing some of our fan favorites. So twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty five, I would like to bring back our edible books because when we poll people, what are those things that mean the most, that you miss the most, aside from the festival, of course? Edible books comes up, and that is something that we do here in Lake Forest Park with our partners at Third Place Commons. So that is something to look forward to in twenty twenty five. We also have Six by Six. This is over at the Shoreline Community College, but this is our next calendar event, and this is for all ages. Last year, when I attended, it was wonderful to see the young and the older together, doing their artwork and very, very proud. With that, a quick reminder of the changes we have in our current Board of Directors. We have Tracy, who is on our board, which is a wonderful, wonderful addition for us to have. And then staff has also been impacted recently, and there are currently two of us on the staff of Shore Lake Arts. And I see this photo everywhere, and I wanted to keep it included because we really could not do it without you. And keeping the art in heart and keeping art in our hearts is huge. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much, Laura. Colleagues, questions for Laura? And Mr. Lebo.
Thank you for the presentation. Do you have some financial numbers or persons served in terms of what's your total budget in your ask? I think was the last one was eighteen. Did you have an ask this year?
An ask this year would be an increase. It's interesting. So our, yeah, to continue our, to continue our calendar in Lake Forest Park as it is, it would need to be closer to thirty thousand for us to be able to keep the quality of artists in here. We've called in a lot of favors. And to be able to continue doing that and with the staff hours, which we haven't really included in our asks before, this is more of a realistic number.
Just to clarify, would the thirty be per annum or biannium?
Oh, um, per year.
Colleagues, questions? Deputy Mayor Bodie.
Well, I for one, you saw my face. I for one, I'm very sad about the closing of the gallery. It was, it was my family's go to place for birthday presents, along with the visit to the chocolate man. So it was perfect. And you had so much in a small space. I, I do, I do understand, you know, that you have to serve multiple places. But keeping awareness of perhaps partnering with Third Place Commons and making sure that there's an actual presence here, I think it makes all the difference because not everybody drives by Ridgecrest, you know.
Yes, so, yes.
It, it is a tremendous asset. I do appreciate the fact that you've come to the Parks and Recreation Board and talked to them about opportunities in the parks and doing more activities in Lake Forest Park. But considering what could be done in the mall and the common space is still something that I think is very important for the future, if to keep the lake and Shore Lake Arts.
Absolutely. And I hope it it helps. Celia and I have already started talking about these things and brainstorming, so we absolutely will be present.
Great. And I wish you luck in getting, you know, back on your feet.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Colleagues, other comments, questions? Councilmember Goldman?
Yeah, thanks. And I'll kind of jump off what Deputy Mayor Bodie would just said. I'm glad you're talking with Silgi about the, with Third Place Commons. Have you discussed maybe getting a booth at the farmer's market, something where you could at least sell some artwork, if not a permanent space in a gallery?
That is a wonderful idea and definitely something that we can talk more about to see the feasibility of that. What we do a lot with Shore Lake Arts, we ourselves are artists as well, but we also are supporting artists. And my viewpoint is that it is our job to find, you know, talent that probably hasn't been discovered already and give them a platform to be known. I see it as a good thing that our artists are no longer in our price range. It seems like I'm, we're doing our job, you know, you've got a great fan base. Please go enjoy your success. And then there will be another band or another artist or art form. Yeah, AI is here, so we're having some conversations about that as well, AI art. So those are the conversations that we anticipate having and see it as a badge of honor if if artists are no longer in our price range.
Thank you. Councilmember or Vice Chair for Tony?
Thank you, and appreciate your presentation. Acknowledge that I am in fact a board member of the organization. But one of the things that I was very impressed by was the fact that, you know, we're, we're kind of infused in the community in the sense that at the last Art in the Park event on Saturday, the high school volunteers, the fact that we can get those high school volunteers at all to volunteer to our, our programs is amazing, and many of them are Lake Forest Park residents.
Yes.
Also want to basically acknowledge that we attend a lot of the Lake Forest Park events. For instance, the Secret Gardens Tour, we had a booth at the, at the Secret Gardens Tour. So there are places that we do show up in there. And one of the things, telling things that I find about our organization that's interesting is that the market arts study was paid for in part by the actions of King County Councilmember Dombowski. And so we've got a lot of broad support out there in the community. And so the question that I really have for you is, you know, given that all this good, this pool of goodwill literally that exists, how are we going to build on that pool of goodwill to, well, when I say we, I'm now speaking, of course, Shore Lake Arts. But how are you, as the Shore Lake Arts Executive Director, going to build on that pool of goodwill?
Build on the, well, we have to take the momentum and run with it. So right now is kind of a time of team of two, but that does not mean that we should be slowing down in any way. I think we have an opportunity in our marketing and PR game to really make sure that folks understand what it is that we do bring to the organization and continue those conversations at a higher level to make sure that the arts in this area remain strong and there's an opportunity for artists in our area.
Thank you.
I can show you my three month to five year to ten year plan.
Excellent. Councilmember Good.
So you have a new building, and when are you planning to be fully operational in that building?
That space will need some work, so we hope that by the end of October, we will be up and running in time
Before Christmas.
Before the holiday, absolutely. So we've heard that loud and clear, like, where are we going to shop this year? It is a gift shop that's going in where the gallery used to be, and I've met the couple and can't wait to see what they bring. But yes, we would love to be able to support our arts, our artists before the holidays.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And that might be an opportunity for us to, you know, again, join forces and have something here in LFP. So while there will be things in Ridgecrest, please know that it is always in my mind, like, how do we also make sure that Lake Forest Park is in this plan?
Colleagues, other questions for Laura? Thoughts, questions? Well, thank you so much for what you did, you do, and I wish you, we all wish you all the success in building out your new space and growing the organization. It's a very valuable resource for our community. I made a note for summer art classes next year for my little one because she loves arts. She did one art class this year, this summer, and then she's done a whole lot of nature camps. And she told me today, I want to do more not nature camps, dada.
Oh, I love it. I love it. Well, art saved me, literally. I mean, coming out of high school, that was the only thing. I don't think I would have gone to college if I didn't go to art school.
Yeah.
So, yeah, getting, getting the young ones access to it early on is so critical and definitely part of our mission.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me.
Yeah, take care.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, this is our, is our rules that we have nothing else on the agenda. We can't anything or other business. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good night.
Good night, guys. Take care.